Holiday and we're all rested up and ready to get back to work. I first want to introduce our new supervisor, Deonte Diggs, who represents the George Washington District. And if you haven't had an opportunity to meet him, if you could stay afterwards, that would be great. He would appreciate that. I think the first thing we'll do is call roll, and then if we could also have introductions, and I would like for the first row over there of the school people, Mr. Farmer, Towery, and Townsend, and Andrea Light, if you all could introduce yourselves, since you're going to be the ones that are speaking on behalf of the school and the county staff. So Randy, I'll let you start.
You can start, you can call the roll, please.
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Diggs?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Ms. Gary?
Here.
Dr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Terry, panel four.
Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
The listed names?
Here.
The doctor's order.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, and we'll start with introductions. I'm Meg Bomke, the Chair of the Board, and I represent the Falmouth District.
Randy Bosberg, County Administrator, representing all of Stafford.
Tinesha Allen, representing Griffiths-Widewater.
Vice Chair.
Terrell English-Hartwood.
Crystal Vanute-Rockhill.
Dr. Young, Garrisonville.
The Garrisonville, this chair.
Monica Ga-.
Monica Gary, Acquahia.
Deonte Diggs, George Washington District.
I'm Susan Randall, George Washington District, current Chair for one week.
Thomas Taylor, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Widewater District.
Alyssa Halsted, Hartwood District.
Tricia Healy, Rockhill District.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth District.
Maureen Sigmund, The Garrisonville District.
Maya Guy for Acquahia.
Crystal Wilmer, Deputy Superintendent.
What?
Jason Towery, Facilities and Operations.
Matthew Townsend, Consensus Director, Stillers-Caple Lake.
Michael White, Director of Finder.
Oh, thank you.
Andrea Light, Chief Director of Financial Services.
AKA Amy.
All right, thank you, everyone. First, before we start, I do want to clear up just a little bit of confusion regarding our originally scheduled November 13th meeting where we were planning to meet, and I had already stated for my Board and the Chair that I could not attend that meeting, I was out of town, I said, but please proceed without me, as you all know, it's very difficult to get this many people together. But then on the day of the meeting, we had two or three people that couldn't attend. So the Chair made the decision to defer, which made sense, we deferred to November 28th, and then unfortunately, there wasn't a noticing, things happened, and not a problem. So here we are today. So I just want to state for the record that we, as the Board of Supervisors, were not trying to put you guys off, we love the school division, you are our largest partner agency, and we always want to meet with you because that's how we learn about what you're doing on your side of the street, especially as it relates to capital projects. But I kind of want to set the stage for today's meeting a little bit. Two years ago, I was the President of the Virginia Association of Counties, and I worked with counties throughout the Commonwealth, and many times, there were Board of Supervisors that would tell me, well, we never meet with our school board. And I said, what? Are you kidding me? That is terrible. And I said, why not? Why do you not meet with your largest partner agency and those that educate your schools' children? And they said, because we always get into an argument. And I said, okay, well, that's part of the push-pull between what the school division's needs are, because let's face it, that's what they are taxed with, that is why the voters put them in place. Our job is very different in looking at and analyzing and asking questions of the school board and the superintendent and your staff, and trying to understand the decisions that you all have made on behalf of the school division. So it's inherent that we're always going to have this push-pull, right? But it's like, you know, raising your family, or, you know, in a marriage, there's always discussion, there's always communication, and that's how we get to the bottom of something. We don't always, for our birthday list, get everything on our birthday list, right? And so there's always a discussion, and I think that's what's really important. We are also very fortunate that we have the three-on-three that was actually created when Susan Stimson was a Board of Supervisor member many years ago, and I was on the school board, and she would always say, I don't understand what you do on the schools, why do you guys always ask us for all this money? And I, and she was the one that created the three-on-three, so we could learn more, they could learn more on the Board of Supervisor's side about what the schools are doing. So for those of you that are new, that is actually how the three-on-three came about. So I, I kind of just wanted to set that tone a little bit, that while we ask questions, we are not being, we're not trying to say we don't trust you, we're not in favor of a decision that you're making, we're just trying to understand how the decision was made. So I'm sure you're going to hear from all my colleagues today, and that's what our purpose is here today, hear about your needs and for us to ask questions, because at the end of the day, the hardest decision that we have to make as a board is setting the tax rate. And when we set the tax rate, we're looking at the operating budgets of the schools and the county, and both of our CIP needs, which, as we all know, are great in this county because of the growth that we're experiencing. So just, if everybody could please be very respectful, I hope we have a very robust conversation, and with that, I will let, who is kicking it off for us? Susan Randall, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bomke. I would also like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and thank you very much for meeting with us this afternoon. You know, one of the things that we have also would like to start having opportunities with our supervisors, different than we've had before, it was interesting when we got a chance for some of us to go down to Hampton to see their academies, and also when Dr. Warner and I were at a recent VSBA conference, seeing the county administrator and supervisors actually doing some of the presentations regarding the different academies, as well as, the one session that we went to was on school construction, and how they came about, different counties presented on how they came together with their supervisors, county administrator, superintendent, in one presentation. It was impressive. So our hope is that we can get to a place where our boards can work together, not just in the fiscal, but also, as you say, in the partnership in working with each other. So I'd like to see us even grow to that big goal, putting it out there, that's what you got to do. So the Stafford County School Board would like to, is very appreciative of our opportunity to meet with the Board of Supervisors today and to discuss our approved CIP. We sent it over October in 2023, and I'm just really, really proud of how hard everyone has worked to put this document together on the school's behalf. On Wednesday, we have a lot to celebrate in the beginning of this, because on Wednesday, October 25th, many of you joined our school board members at the new site for high school number six, and I was on the CIP as a member with Ms. Bomke when we first talked about a high school six, and that was in 2010. So it's in a long time coming, but we're really excited. And it's going to, you know, there's some things that we, as a board, felt were important, and our staff listened, and we have some great things coming for that new high school, so we're super excited. But not only that, we came together last fall, and we had an issue, as we've discussed working together here. The one thing that we had as an issue was taking Hartwood and inserting ES 18 and 19. And it was a robust discussion that we had, we all spoke about it, and you all considered our priorities and made that move to move Hartwood and expedite up 18 and 19. Again, that was because we came together collaborating as two boards, you all listened to our needs, you, we understand, I mean, growth is the number one problem in our county challenge, I would say, versus problem, and we feel it too. And for that growth need, ES 18 and ES 19 was what we needed in order to fix or start to fix some of our growth challenges. So I applaud the work of both boards coming together, because when I got on the board four years ago, we had no schools, the CIP that were coming on into being built, and now we have three schools that are coming into play. That's a big accomplishment, to go from zero to three, to get a CIP change from what it was on your side to what we were asking. And you all listened, and you worked with us, and, you know, the county, our students, our families, our community benefits from that work. And so I feel like there needs to be a, you know, a big thank you from our side, and for the public to know that this was the work of two boards collaborating and working together. So, great job. We also mentioned that we needed three rebuilds of Drew and Rising Star and Hartwood. Hartwood, and all three of these projects, again, it's a priority of our board, and your board accepted that, and made it a priority as well, that these are the three next projects that need to happen. So that's where we're going to focus today, is on the timeline for replacing Drew, Rising Star, and Hartwood. Our current plan has them all opening in '28. Yours timeline, and we get it, there's a lot of needs in the county. We have to ask for what we need, so we're putting out what we need, and definitely it's open for discussion on our timeline versus your timeline. I would like to say that this evening, we're going to have other board members speak about our needs that we have for the three rebuilds, what this current situations are, but I would also like to invite all of you, for your knowledge, current knowledge, because some of you have seen them in past years, but seeing in their current state, to maybe take a trip, and we would be happy to host you to come visit Drew, Rising Star, and Hartwood in their current state, to see where we are and what we're up against, and how those challenges affect learning. I know when I was working for rebuild of Stafford High School, Ms. Bomke told me, she's like, you have to give us, what is the reason that we would need to rebuild Stafford High School? And when we went to visit Mountain View, which was the newest one, and we visited Stafford, gave them equal time, went department by department, and we saw that the kids at Stafford were having challenges in getting the equal educational opportunities that kids in the other high schools had. In their science department, I taught biology at Biology, Environmental Science, and Marine Science at Brookpoint, and I could run 24 microscopes in my room. If you ran four at Stafford High School, you blew out the electricity for three classrooms. So there was definitely some challenges that were affecting educational opportunities for thousands of kids. So it was a necessity to rebuild that school. The same is, like I said, we'll have each of the board members talk about some of these other schools, and the challenges that are affecting the educational opportunities for the children in those buildings. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Ms. Healy, she will speak to us a little bit about the historical perspective of where we've been and where we're going.
Thank you, Ms. Randall, I didn't know I'd get to go first. I'll try to keep this short. We have a listing of the projects, and one thing we asked the Superintendent to put on there is when these projects first appear in a school board capital improvement plan. And it's interesting to note that the very three priorities that we have, as Ms. Randall mentioned, which is the rebuild of Drew Middle School, replacing Rising Star, and the Hartwood Elementary rebuild, all first appeared on the school's capital improvement plan in FY '07. So that was, what, about 18 years ago, we're now in FY '25. Yeah, the FYs are always a little confusing to me because we're a year ahead, but anyway. I think we all know, you can look at a school, and you can look at when it was built, and there's ways you can maintain schools, but once they get to a certain age, it's just too much of a challenge. You get to a point where you have to pay more to try to maintain it than it would cost to rebuild it, and that's the situation we're in with both Drew and Rising Star. Drew is over, what, over 50? How old is Drew?
It is over 50 years old.
Somebody know? Over 50? Drew's over 50 years old.
Over 60 years old.
60 years old, wow. Almost eligible for senior citizen status. But the, it's been a great school, and the school has a heart, and that's why it's still there. We had a Superintendent many years ago that actually proposed that we close Drew Middle School, that was after we had built Dixon Smith, and we built Shirley Heim, and, you know, we had some extra space in middle schools. But the public came out, and the staff came out, and they talked about how Drew was really a family situation. I know Ms. Bomke is very familiar with Drew, because, you know, you have constituents that have gone there, and it's a very special school, but it is not really acceptable in terms of the environment that it's in now. And there's only so much we can do as it is, so we need to rebuild it. Rising Star is in at least the same condition. I don't know how many of you have been to Rising Star, I think you have, Mr. English, but, and Ms. Gary, it's, you know, does very important work for, you know, our smallest and most vulnerable, you know, students.
It's 1997, I think it's.
The first part, front part of it. You mean the Rising Star?
Yeah.
Yeah, the old Gale.
The whole Gale.
Yeah, the front, and then it had renovated out on. Well, the bottom line is, it's.
That Drew, Mount Brent, that's how, that's how.
Well, I mean, and Drew's a great school, and Drew, we need, we need to maintain Drew, but we need to rebuild it. And the problem is that we can't keep putting these Band-Aids on, the Band-Aids are not sticking, and it's costing us more and more money to try to keep it going, and it's really economically not, you know, a good investment for the county to keep, trying to keep it running rather than rebuild it. So that's why we had put Drew as our number one priority in terms of building, and, you know, we've asked for it to be replaced in August of 2028, and, you know, the approved county timing is 2030. So what we'd like to do is to try to work with you to see if there's a way we can move that up, because it's going to be to our advantage economically to get that rebuilt, so we won't have to keep pouring this money into repairs that are going to be useless because we're going to tear the school down. I don't think I really need to address Hartwood, as Mr. English has addressed that many, many times, he is very well aware of the need to replace Hartwood, and Hartwood is actually going to be an advantage to us when we replace it, because not only will we finally be on county water and septic, not have to worry about the well, we will have additional seats, and that will help us out, because, you know, even with elementary 18 and 19, we're still going to be, you know, stretching it to fit all our students in. So, you know, we appreciate that you have approved these for replacement, but we'd really like to talk about the timing and what we can do, and I know there's different possibilities, when we built Mountain View and Brent, I think we used the PPEA, it was a different, you know, method of funding, I'm not suggesting that for here, but if there's ways we can look at alternative funding sources, or how to get this done, to keep with your, you know, requirements for the budget, we'd really like to do that. But it's significant that this board as a whole has agreed consistently on this priority order, that these need to be done, and in these timeframes. And it's not, you know, it's not something that was determined today, or last week, or last year, you can look and see, it's been over 18 years that, you know, these projects have been on the list, but after that time, they're just not functioning. It's not fair to the kids that are there, the staff that's there, and, you know, all our constituents. So I probably more than use my time, sorry about that.
That's okay. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Chase to speak with us about Drew, Drew definitely has her heart as well.
So, just to repeat what Ms. Healy said, we asked for a replacement of Drew to open in fall of 2028, but the subsequent county CIP has it scheduled to open in the fall of 2030. I believe Drew needs to be replaced as soon as possible. Why? In the southern end of the county, we currently have 2,850 middle school seats distributed across Drew, Gale, and Dixon Smith. This year, we expect to be 85% full. Our current projections are that these schools will reach 100% capacity around the fall of 2028, so two years before a replacement is slated to come. Normally, I would agree to a couple of trailers to get by until the replacement will increase the capacity by 450 seats. Unfortunately, I think we will be lucky if Drew makes it to 2028. And why do I say that? So in June of 2022, the school board approved using 3.8 million in bond funds to replace Drew's aging HVAC system. In September of 2022, Drew's fire alarms went off unexpectedly. When I asked what had caused this, there was no definitive answer. I was told in older buildings, the electrical system can sometimes cause that to happen. As a result, I asked for a special called meeting to discuss altering the CIP to move Drew up on the list. At that time, it was not the will of the board. We agreed to bundle elementary school 18 and 19 when told it would result in substantial construction savings. In December of 2022, we were informed that the cost to replace Drew's HVAC would be around $20 million. So based on staff recommendations, the board voted to give Drew's HVAC system temporary generators at a cost of $760,000, and redistribute the remaining $3 million in bond funds to projects at other schools. So for example, repairs to the middle school tracks at AG Wright, Gale, and Rodney Thompson, and improvements to the auditorium at North Stafford High School. In May of 2023, a sewer pipe at Drew broke, spewing sewer into the stormwater drains. This unexpected and unbudgeted repair cost $100,000. Only one pipe was replaced, so we should not be surprised if more fail over the next few years. At our October meeting, we approved the use of $218,000 in unbudgeted funds, because one of the compressors at Drew had failed, and if left unfixed, parts of the building would be without heating or air conditioning. Finally, last month, we were informed the intercom system at Drew had failed, the temporary fix is walkie-talkies, maybe that's been fixed, the last update I had was that they were working to get parts to fix the system. So if Drew experiences a catastrophic failure and has to be closed, where will the students currently attending Drew go? They would have to be split between Dixon Smith and Gale, these schools have a capacity of 1,100 each, we would be looking at each of these schools being 300 students over capacity. I guarantee you that people living in Falmouth, Hartwood, and George Washington districts will be very upset if this happens. Okay? So how we choose to spend our tax dollars says a lot about our priorities. What is the message when we divert money to auditoriums at other schools while students at Drew are unable to enroll and band because there's no room for them? What about when bond funds are reallocated to athletic tracks at other middle schools while students and staff at Drew worry about a failing HVAC system? What about when we use proffer money for turf fields while compelling students and staff at Drew to endure cockroach infestations as sewer pipes are crumbling? I am beyond fed up. I was told that building elementary schools 18 and 19 simultaneously would save money, so I agreed to hold off on Drew. Mysteriously, these two schools were projected to cost $37 million more than the inflation-adjusted estimates presented last year. I gather now, staff is projecting they will cost $26 million more. Regardless, I cannot in good faith argue that this latest proposal of bundling Drew, Rising Star, and Hartwood together will save money. All I can do is beseech you to find money for the replacement of Drew Middle School as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Our next speaker is going to be Dr. Warner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for meeting with us. I know that it's difficult for us to get seven people on a timeline that works, and to try to do 14 is challenging. I'm going to talk to you about Rising Star. Rising Star was built in 1937. Every time it rains, the entryway floods. Every 30 days, the pipes, the water lines have to be flushed, because otherwise, the lead from the pipes accumulates in the water, and it becomes unsafe for the children. This is where our youngest and most vulnerable learners are taught. And we could argue that early childhood education isn't a requirement, Head Start, VPI, those are voluntary programs, but those programs, every dollar that we spend on early childhood education actually results in a $4 to $16 reward to the community. So for every dollar we spend, we get money back. Early childhood education makes a difference in not only how children learn, but in their whole cognitive and social-emotional development that prepares them not only for their educational future, but also for jobs in the future and careers, and study after study has shown that they're beneficial, that it is the one thing that we spend money on that has the greatest benefit to the community. And if we sacrifice those positions, the risk is that we lose both the federal and state funding, and we can't get it back. And that also is disruptive to our community. Families depend on their children in getting quality early childhood education through VPI and early child, and Head Start. We also have a growing population of special education students, so the capacity at both Rising Star and North Star is completely full. Rising Star has a number of problems because of its age, so when you discharge the students in the afternoon, there are three rows of buses, and we have to escort these little people up past the tailpipes, and it's rather nerve-wracking to try to get several hundred students on the right buses at the right time, and navigate them through the rows of buses that are running, and it's just not an optimal environment for student learning. At North Star, the only students that can attend North Star lives north of 610, which means that many of our three- and four-year-olds spend an hour and a half on a bus, traveling all the way down to Rising Star where they have capacity. When North Star was opened in 2019, the original proposal was, and it was on our CIP, that there be an expansion to add classrooms. Well, now we need to add modular units in order to accommodate the growth that we, that the county's seen. It's just, the students are already here, we have to find a place for them, and we can't sacrifice these programs because they have a net benefit to the community, not just in preparing these students, but also in developing its social, in our economic engine. Schools are a critical part in how businesses view a community and why people move to a community. So I know that. And it's just not an optimal environment for student learning. At North Star, the only students that can attend North Star lives north of 610, which means that many of our three- and four-year-olds spend an hour and a half on a bus, traveling all the way down to Rising Star where they have capacity. When North Star was opened in 2019, the original proposal was, and it was on our CIP, that there be an expansion to add classrooms. Well, now, we need to add modular units in order to accommodate the growth that the county's seen. It's just, the students are already here. We have to find a place for them. And we can't sacrifice these programs because they have a net benefit to the community, not just in preparing these students, but also in developing it socially in our economic engine. Schools are a critical part in how businesses view a community and why people move to a community. So, I know that early childhood education is important, and I know that it reaps benefits not just for the students, but also for the families that are involved. Rising Star's replacement could coincide very nicely with Drew's because what we would like to do is swap those two locations. That would put Rising Star on one, where the old Drew is, and it would also be a better location because a lot of other ancillary services are provided there. Childfind, McKenney Vento, other social services are handled at the facility out at Melchers now. So, that would prove to be a better location. It would also facilitate and utilize the land that we already have. And Drew does need to be replaced because Drew's problems and the cockroaches and the other things, those are issues that we confront at Rising Star as well. And it's just the age of the building. It's a constant struggle for HVAC systems because each individual unit has their own unit, and those units are old. So, if they break, it's, you know, a scavenger hunt to get parts and to get them fixed. And that is a health and safety risk for our students. So, it's just imperative that... I realize that the county has multiple needs. It's not just what the schools need. It's the roads. It's the transportation. It's the public safety. It's the fire and rescue. But there has been a gap in the investments made in new construction. Shirley Heim was built in 2009. That was the last school built for actual capacity. And it's been great to get high school six and elementary school eighteen and nineteen, which we worked very hard to make sure that we could get them on the same timeline because we need the space and we are trying to save money as best we can. I can only hope that if we can move these timelines up to be more accommodate the needs that we have, the long-term benefit to the community is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Ms. Halsted?
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Susan, before we start, I just want to let people know that the VPI services over at Rising Star, if you're not aware, that's a two- and three-year-old program. Not everybody is aware of that. That was started, actually, I think, under Dr. Massey quite a few years ago. So, anyway, I just wanted to let people know that. And also, I want to make sure that we leave a lot of time for questions. So, I am assuming we have three more people to speak. Okay, so, because we have a hard stop at 6:30.
Yes.
So, I want to make sure we have sufficient time.
Great.
I just want to mention, I also have the report, the annual report that's conducted for our early childhood education services that I would like to leave with all supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Halsted?
So, in the interest of, and to address what Ms. Bonkey is saying, I'm not going to repeat what my fellow board members have said because clearly, there's an urgent need. So, I've scratched out a lot here that I don't need to say now. But special thanks to Mr. English. He makes me advocating for Hartwood Elementary pretty easy because he's been, he's seen the condition that it's in, and he understands what's happening out there. I look at Hartwood Elementary as what this county used to be, this cute little county that was just sort of off the beaten path, somewhere in between DC and Fredericksburg. And that's sort of a staple of what this county used to be and doesn't accurately reflect where we are now or our current reality. We are all very well aware that when people are choosing their forever home location, they do it mostly based on school rating systems, particularly if they're bringing kids to this place. They're definitely not going to look at a school system that doesn't rate, or that is 111th out of 132 school districts in the state. That doesn't bode well for us, particularly as rising housing, as the housing market rises in price. They're really going to be looking to tie in and justifying your house purchase with their local school system. And I think we're running out of time to be able to justify selling homes at the rate that Stafford could as our school system remains in a steady decline. And that's teachers, budgets, spacing situations. So, I want to talk just a little bit about what I look at when Mr. White gives us the information that we look at when I started on this school board. The cost to replace Hartwood Elementary was $55 million, roughly. Couple weeks ago, we were presented with one. Now, we're up to 88 million if we do it now or if we have all of the right things in place in a row. So, our cost of inaction and pushing things and kicking this can down the road is costing the taxpayers a good deal of money. And we can't stop the housing from coming, which means we shouldn't stop the schools from being built either or repaired. It's no secret that Westlake is going to crush our school system. There's no way to over-exaggerate that statement, given the numbers of what they will bring and the current state of affairs here for Stafford County. Please, take a day, go to the schools. If you haven't been there, the ones particular that we're talking about, spend the day. The supplies are in the hallway. The classrooms are in the supply closet. The teachers are fighting every day just to walk around something, hope something doesn't fall on a kid's head or they trip over something. It is an accident waiting to happen and a lawsuit that we're going to have to eventually face one day. And that's on us. We've been having these discussions since I got here, so there's no more plausible deniability for anybody. It is what it is. It's time to fix these school buildings. So, I was given a breakdown. The county's active residential development data reveals there were 24 subdivisions with 2,266 vacant lots in the Hartwood District, which makes up approximately 39% of total vacant subdivision lots countywide. The anticipated student yield from these vacant lots are 508 elementary students, 287 middle school students, and 440 high schoolers for a grand total of 1,235 students. I'm absolutely not sure where we're putting any of these children, not with a quality education backing them up. I want to talk for a second about proffered land. We seem to be super giddy about proffered land from our builder friends, except recent history has taught us that not all proffers for land are above board and not all land is a reasonable site that can accommodate the specific needs of a school building. So, who ensures that once again, we don't end up with land that is not only unbuildable, but more importantly, costs us more money to retrofit or to have to be stuck with as a vacant swampland or other? We are left standing, shrugging our shoulders all the time, trying to fit our square peg into a round hole. It makes no sense. There is a lot of time, effort, and energy that goes into these numbers. They are as finite as they could possibly be. They're not just green, yellow, red on a paper. These are assigned to each individual child and family that lives in Stafford County. And so, every single solitary one of those numbers should mean something to us other than a spreadsheet number. These are kids that are not experiencing education the way they should. They're not learning to read. They're not learning mathematics. Their behavioral issues are impacting everything that we do on a daily basis. It's categorically unfair to these children. So, I'm just going to close with Hartwood. We are definitely desperate for our replacement school, although we are super grateful for elementary school eighteen. There is no doubt about that. But staff estimates our total square footage for that school to be around 128,000, giving us about 519 seats. So, here's, let's talk a little bit about inaction. We wanted to add a bus parking lot up over there because that will help us in the future with all these additional people and all this additional burden. But we're afraid to ask for particular things to be lumped into a budget, and so, we take them out and we ask for them independently. And all that does is take what's an eight-million-dollar project now, we're still going to need it, and in four years now, we're going to pay 15 million for it. So, we have to really take a look at making the economics here make sense and not having us have to piecemeal every single thing we put down because it's super costly at the end of the day.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Next is Ms. Guy, talking about the good news about our site selection and timing. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll try to make it really quick. And I think that Ms. Halsted touched on a little bit of it in her speech. But owning both properties for our site selection helps us. I do believe we do get some type of cost savings, and everyone loves a sale. I love a sale. So, I think that's good. But also, the timing, it allows us to get the kids back in the classes quicker because we're basically doing like a flop, a swap with the schools. It can be streamlined. We can synchronize the construction and plan with, like I said, minimize the disruption to the students and the staff, which is incredibly important. It's not just an efficient plan of action, but it's incredibly strategic. And then, to talk about the proffer sites, I don't understand the entire purview of proffers. So, allow me grace if I misspeak. But when you guys do find proffer sites for us, it is so important that someone in there is thinking, you know, I want to say this respectfully, but like, there not being easement right down the site. You know, it has to be buildable, right? And that, and even if we do get proffered land, you know, how much is that going to cost for us to build on? So, that's why these site selections are fantastic because we have them already. We don't have to pay outright for them. So, I think we're desperately trying to be transparent with you guys. I know my board, my fellow board member doesn't think that there'd be a cost savings to do the two. I think there will be. And the good thing is, we get the receipts. So, we can find out. But, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. One of the things, like Ms. Guy was alluding to, is that when we're asking for the timeline, Dr. Chase is talking about, and Dr. Warner are talking about Drew and Melchers, by having those two pieces of properties, we are able to switch. But having the schools being built at the same time is going to be crucial because we're going to be taking Drew property and making it Rising Star, and we're going to be taking Rising Star property to make Drew. So, we kind of need those projects coordinated in order to have success with that. Next, and our final is going to be Ms. Sigmund is going to be talking about our 3R list, which in the 20, I think the 25 to, I'm sorry. The new CIP or 3R list has $162,315,000 worth of projects, of which 78,942,150 are not funded. Ms. Sigmund?
Hi, thank you all for being here and for being so amenable to rescheduling quickly. I appreciate that. We've heard a lot about new construction. I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about the maintenance of the properties we already have. We have billions of dollars in real estate that have school buildings and school facilities sitting on property in Stafford County. Of course, that's going to take ongoing maintenance, just like our homes and cars do. The prevailing sentiment is that it should be about a percentage and a half of the insured value, which is generally what we look at. We have a 10-year 3R list of about $20 million a year of scheduled maintenance for all of our buildings. We get copies of that. It's a rolling 10-year list, so we always know what's coming. Routinely, we receive about half of that funded, and half goes unfunded. There, we run into two problems. One, a vast majority, about 90% of what we receive is funded by bond funds, and about 1% of what we receive is cash-funded. So, two things. One, we would really like to work towards planning to have all of our 3R needs covered in the budget. We know it's coming. We know it's coming 10 years in advance. So, I think it is something that we can plan for. If it's an 18 to $20 million spread, if some years we get 15 and some years we get 19, at least we know what we're planning for. The issue becomes when we don't get everything that we need, the money that we do get is unseen. It goes behind the walls. It goes into the ceilings. And the things that are unfunded are the things that our children touch every day. We are not, just looking at the 2024 list, which of course, this is old, you know, this is our current year. We are not replacing generators at elementary schools in Rock Hill, in Garrisonville, and in Aquia. My kids like flashlight reading day, but sometimes when the generators don't work, kids go home or kids are bused to other locations where there is electricity. We are not replacing middle school lockers. All of our kids are required to use lockers in middle school because of a variety of factors, space being one of them. When those aren't working properly, they become, you know, a security issue. They become a safety issue. They become flat-out annoying. It's hard enough for middle schoolers to get their lockers open. We're also not able to invest in upgrading our playgrounds. I've been at multiple elementary school tours where the playgrounds are closed because they are not safe and they are waiting for funds to be repaired or parts to come in. A lot of times, our PTOs are using their funds to cover that, and that's great. But that means that they are not doing other things within the school that they're there to do because they're filling gaps that we are unable to fill. Second, when we are bond funding our planned expenses, we are tying up our borrowing power. If we are borrowing $10 million a year for planned expenses, we are essentially borrowing the value of an elementary school every five to six years on stuff that we knew was coming. It also means that when we're pushing off these things, we've already spent nearly $2 million in unplanned expenses that come from our operating budget or from our capital reserves if we can get it done in time because we've pushed off so much work. 50% of the work we know needs to be done, we are ignoring, ignoring in our buildings. How many of you at your home or in anything you own just flat-out ignore stuff that's broken or needs to be fixed? We're not painting our schools. We're not changing out our fixtures as they need to be. You know, we want children to go into a place that looks great. Replacing bathroom floor tiles, that becomes a safety hazard. Then, we have to go in when a child does get hurt or does become, you know, an emergent problem rather than a planned problem. We all know it's more expensive to call a plumber on a Sunday night than it is to schedule a plumber to come for the scheduled maintenance. So, I would really like to, one, work towards having this budgeted each year as close to fully budgeted as possible, and two, work on having it not be so debt-reliant so that we have more funds available for construction and renovation needs.
Thank you. All right, so as we go through this, what we would like to know is, first, we would like to know if this is our situation, how can we work together to do better than we have done? I mean, obviously, we don't want to keep things status quo. We would like to work better, to be able to do better together as we have in the past. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's comments. You guys obviously thought about what you wanted to say, and it's all, I would say, probably everything you said is true and accurate, unfortunately. In going back to what Ms. Guy said regarding the proffers, many of the proffers, all of the proffered land that was proffered for schools was all done under other boards many years ago. And I could not agree with you more that some of that proffered land wasn't worth a dime. Thank you, Tanisha. So, and we are very well aware of, and we haven't approved any big rezonings like that in many years. So, you know, and as Ms. Randall said in her opening comments, you know, four years ago, when she got on the board, there were no schools in the CIP. There was a superintendent that didn't have schools in the CIP. That's not, unfortunately, that is not our fault. It is the school division's responsibility to bring those needs to us, and those needs were not brought to us. Okay? I see some people shaking their heads. So, I'm not going to lay blame, but I think that is an accurate statement. So, I do know, I would like to back up for just a moment, and I would say I understand all the issues regarding Hartwood, Drew, and Rising Star. I've visited all those sites coming from the school division. I'm very familiar with all of them. I do want to back up for just one minute because I do know that some board members have questions about elementary school 19. I met Dr. Chase out at the new site.
Ms. Bonkey, we have that as a separate agenda item?
Okay.
If we want to just stick with the rebuilds? Because we have a whole presentation and ready to go for the ES19 questions.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I'm just really concerned about time. So, I know there are specific questions, but how long is that presentation?
Oh, not long.
Okay. All right. Fine. Go ahead, please.
So, is there anyone that has any questions about the rebuilds that we can? Okay.
Okay.
And Ms. Bonkey, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Ferry Farm was listed on the CIP previously as a rebuild, but it got changed right before I got on to a renovation. But also, we've heard rumors, and so therefore, I think this is a good conversation to have in what Ms. Guy was talking about and Ms. Halsted about the proffered property in Westlake. There has been some concern, and I will say it's been in, you know, not in a source that I would necessarily say credible, but that your board is considering taking dollars versus property for Westlake proffers. Is that true? Can you help with that? Can you help with that?
Yeah, not that we're aware of.
Your board was making a decision to consider taking dollars as opposed to property.
Uh, that's not something we've talked about in closed session. No.
Good. Thank you for clearing that up.
I just want to make a comment before we get too far into that proffer statement, I'm sorry, proffer statement that was made. Um, I want to be clear about the proffers, right? Um, Embry Mill proffers, there's two sites. There's a site for, uh, was for elementary school eighteen. Yes, eighteen, okay? And there was, uh, a site for middle school and a site for, uh, fire and, uh, fire station. And there's money for that sitting there that needs to be used within a certain period of time specifically for that. And when you talk about the site not being useful, um, ooh, see a look over there. That was on, when you talk about the, uh, what do you call it, the, that in between, in between the, the easement on that smaller site, that is something that happened on the school board. That's something that happened on the school board. And then when you talk about this proffered site not being conducive for building, that happened on the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors swapped the land that was given for middle school or for elementary school, which is that flat land right there where, uh, the, um, Embry Mill, all those, um, um, soccer plaques, all those soccers, that was supposed to be, um, the, either elementary or middle school. So we swapped that. That, that's, that's on us. I was not on the board, neither one of the boards then. But I just want to make sure that people are aware that doesn't have anything to do with the individuals providing the site. In this case, Embry Mill built and planned since nineteen eighty, okay, with proffered sites for those three things that those individuals that are living in Embry Mill paid for and cannot get right now. And when we talk about Hartwood, for example, nothing against Supervisor English here. But in terms of Hartwood having farmland that they could sell to anybody, and they could put homes there, and these kids, we have to put them into seats, okay? We have to put them into schools. But we're forcing, we're going to put two schools in Hartwood and yet no school in Embry Mill. When I came on the board and we talked about Drew, I'm the one on the Board of Supervisors following up, backing, um, Dr. Chase. On Drew, I'm the one that started talking about roaches falling from the ceilings, and I was told not to say that. Well, now we have roaches, rats, and anything, and mold. That's what we have. So now suddenly Drew is on the top. We need to make sure that we are accountable, and we need to make sure that the dollars that are provided to the school board, that that is what we're spending. And how we spend it, our constituents needs to know for transparency. And when we give you money for three schools and you bundle it, and it's more expensive today because you're making it bigger or larger or whatever it is that you're doing, and you expect to come here and get more money, I'm against that, especially when you're supposed to build a school, where are you supposed to build it, and you do not. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Young. Supervisor Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So. No, I think she was saying about the, if we had questions on three Rs or maintenance, yeah. Um, the rebuilds, I have a question on, um, the cost of Drew and one elementary. What if we were to do, I mean, maybe Chris or Jason will be able to answer that question. Um, what would be the cost if we did Drew and one, one elementary versus what's currently slated, um, for CIPs now? I'm just curious. It doesn't mean I'll support it, but I'm just curious about the numbers. To the bundling of the eighteen and nineteen, because like Dr. Young, and I'm eager to find out um, why the cost went up besides inflation adjustments. Um, because that was one of the, I mean, I think I rang the bell with Supervisor Gary loudly when we were like, yeah, we're going to push for eighteen and nineteen because of cost savings. And so I'm not opposed to that plan, but outside of inflation adjustments, the numbers kind of have to make sense for me now to support that. And in interim, I'd like to know an alternative such as, and I did advocate for Drew with, with Dr. Young about his condition, and I was willing to let Drew be secondary to those two because of the cost savings. So now if you're telling me that there isn't a significant cost savings for eighteen and nineteen, I can't, then I need to know what is the alternative for Drew in one elementary school?
And, and there's not going to be any bundling, is what we understand.
At this point, at this point, based on the numbers, I don't even see what's the point of bundling. So I, so I'd like to know an alternative option for funding, um, what those numbers will look like.
Yeah, and so we can work on that, and, and as far as eighteen and nineteen bundling, we do have a slide on that. So as, uh, Ms. Randall mentioned, so as soon as you all say, we can pull it up and talk about that as well.
Okay.
Supervisor English?
Um, how many, how many kids do you have at Rising Star?
Uh, two hundred and twenty.
Would it, have you looked at, if Drew's as bad as y'all say it is, and I, and I believe you, I'm not doubting you, whatever, because I, I know how Hartwood is and I know how Drew is, but why wouldn't you take the money instead of building eighteen right now and go ahead and do Drew right away? Because it's, the way y'all are saying, it could be, it could go down tomorrow, and then we're going to be in problems if we couldn't do that. The other thing is, have you thought about taking, when you do Drew, Drew, why can't you do Drew and Rising Star together and make it one big school instead of do two separate schools? Why can't you? Because the land is there. If we had to go buy, why couldn't you just add on for the two hundred or three hundred students for Rising Star? Wouldn't that save money in the long run by doing something like that instead of rebuilding on the same property?
So there are fundamentally different groups of kids that have different needs, and that's part of the challenge. And, and as far as building the schools bigger to save money, that's definitely something you're going to hear. Uh, and, and it's actually a recommendation that Mr. English, you made to us at the Joint Schools Working Committee, and we've been responsive to that, and that is part of the cost adjustment, is, uh, building the schools bigger. So a consideration too is how big is too big? And what are the services that you're trying to provide at each place? We think a thousand-student elementary school is pretty big. Probably the most that we would ever want to go. In terms of a thousand-student middle school, we think that that's actually pretty small. But in fairness to you and in transparency to you, it's been on your CIP from Jump Street as an eleven-hundred-student, um, middle school. It's probably not what we would recommend moving forward because there is some efficiencies in the future for you to build it a little bit bigger, but to house more middle school students, not to house pre-K students and teenagers in the same space. So your, your point is a good one, which is we should probably build our schools a little bit bigger in the K eight space to accommodate for more students, but we probably need to be careful about what services we're trying to provide in both places. One of the challenges that we currently have with Drew right now is that we've got two very distinct, different student populations occupying the same space, and it causes conflict. We've got a part of a day school, the Heather M. Field Day School is in the basement of Drew. It has a separate entrance. It has a separate facility effectively in terms of how we lock down the hallways and how we have to manage the student populations outside and during the day. And it's suboptimal. Candidly, we, it may make more sense for us to move a portion of the day school to be more in line with Rising Star than not. Mr. Fulmer, if you could go back a couple of slides, I think that this is helpful to kind of give you a glimpse of the benefit of site selection and why this actually might help to save a little bit of money. If you wanted to co-locate the, the facilities on, on one piece of property, I think that that, that has a, has some potential to, to explore. Um, the property on the left is actually the Gary Melchers, uh, former Gale, uh, Junior High Middle School site. Uh, and you can see that building. It's on the left. And we did a test fit of that property of what it would look like if we were to put a middle school back on that property. And so effectively, what we would do is we would build, uh, the structure on the athletic fields. And when, um, that structure was completed, you could move middle school students into a structure and have basically the two buildings co-located while the other building is being constructed or vice versa. So that you, you don't have to, um, dislocate a group of students while you're doing construction. You can actually kind of have your cake and eat it too. That's a big, pretty big cost savings. Uh, but, but ultimately, it would be difficult for you to have two different facilities on that same piece of property at the same time.
But isn't Drew, isn't Gale, I mean Gale, I've got Gale on. Isn't, isn't Garrisonville Middle, is it Garrisonville Middle and Garrisonville Elementary combined? So that work, it works up there. I'm just saying, what I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is if we did the Rising Star and Drew together on the same piece of property, you take the Gale Middle School property, the old Gale Middle School, and you tear it all down, you could probably sell that property to make up some differences as far as the second school. I'm just trying to look outside the box a little bit and try to save money.
Very inventive. Um, and, and could you, could you do something akin to that, uh, in, conceptually? Yes, I don't think that piece of, that particular piece of property is big enough for that.
You talk which property?
The Melchers.
The Melchers property in particular.
I agree with you. I think Drew would be your best bet.
Oh, no, it's smaller.
And, and that's, that's part of the other piece of property is you got too small.
Try to buy more property from anybody around that?
Uh, and, and you also have to look at the topography around there, which is a little unfavorable as well. But, but we're, we're right there with you in terms of, of two concepts that you've brought out that I think are really important for this body to really consider. And these two bodies to consider is, you know, utilizing the assets that you have right now, which is you have property with buildings on them right now. How do you utilize that to the highest and best value? And what is the right size of school where you can accommodate the most folks? Because candidly, you building bigger schools now means you have to build less schools later. You do. So, um, it, it, it may seem like upfront a price tag that's unsavory at the moment, but you may be saving more money down the road.
And I know you guys don't want to hear this, because I've said it before, but if we just did away with Drew, I mean, not do away with Drew, but do Drew, and then do the Rising Star all in the same fit, and maybe you might have to do away with the stadium and, and the football fields, maybe they would have to share it with somebody else. But again, I'm just looking down the road to save some money and get something done right away, and that's just how. And again, I know you don't want to hear about sharing fields and all that stuff, but we might be in a situation.
We do share fields with like the middle, we do share fields with middle school and high school at Brookpoint Stafford Middle because they co-locate on one campus. But moving kids off of campus, it can present a problem too.
That we might have to do that.
I, I don't disagree. I don't, definitely don't. But you make a really good segue into talking about ES nineteen. Um, and, and everybody has the, um, the agenda item in front of them with, uh, so you'll, you'll be able to follow along, and I'm going to let, uh, Jason and Chris take over on this.
Okay, just letting everybody know, it's six oh three.
Thanks. Okay, um, so let's talk just for a minute about, uh, some of the costs that we're talking about right now with elementary schools eighteen and nineteen. So these currently on the, we've got both schools here, obviously, eighteen and nineteen in front of you. Um, right now, or what we were projecting back in September was approximately eighty-one million. I'm looking down here at the bottom now for eighteen and about seventy-eight, almost seventy-nine million for nineteen. In the past three months, and this, so this was the number that was presented in the CIP. Uh, we've, uh, continued to work with our, uh, engineers and architects on both of those, and both of those plans are in the county right now. Uh, nineteen was just submitted three weeks ago, I believe. So, uh, we've, we've been able to refine those numbers a little bit and, and get them down based on some more current projections. Um, I am hopeful, you know, we're all hopeful, right, that maybe these numbers even come, come our way just a little bit more. But in talking about the bundling, let's just talk about that for one minute because I think, I think it's important. And there's been a lot of questions around it. Um, ES eighteen and nineteen right now are being designed as a prototype. And if we do a prototype right, you know, we're not just going to build it once or twice. We'll build it maybe hopefully five, six, seven times. Every time you rebuild that prototype, you're saving, uh, design costs. Now, there's certain design updates, and you still have to do site plans and permits and other things with every construction build. So ten years from now, it's not going to be exactly, we can't take today's plans and put them in ten years from now, right? But, um, you'll save a, a significant majority of, um, the basic, you know, layout, preliminary layouts, and all of the different conceptual, um, uh, concepts that we're going for in these, uh, schools. Um, just getting to that point is, is a huge win, right? So already we've projected about, and we're actually realizing this now, five point six million dollars reduction in the design costs, okay? So just on elementary schools eighteen and nineteen by designing them together, um, we're, we're saving that over what we had originally budgeted for those design costs. Um, so there, there is actively savings that we're realizing right now. Uh, there's been some questions about what, what other savings there might be. It's, we don't know yet during construction, right? We're, we're kind of in that waiting game right now between getting our plans ready and when they'll go on the street out in hopefully the summer. We'll, we'll have a much better read, obviously, on the market by that time. Um, but whether or not we, we put the projects together and have one contractor build both schools or if the bids are staggered a month or two, um, we do still project that we'll have, um, likely construction savings um, in either, either of those events. Of course, yet to be seen what those will be. And then, um, ultimately, and I, I didn't put this up there, but I was thinking about this earlier today, and I've thought about this before, there's actually a lot of savings long-term in maintenance of the, uh, prototype schools because, um, you can begin to project maintenance schedules and plan maintenance a lot more, um, effectively when you have similar buildings and products and systems out there, right? So that's something that we'll look to benefit from more long-term. Just, um, about twenty million dollars of those, uh, updated costs, which right now, as of today, we're looking at about seventy-six million on eighteen and about seventy-three million on nineteen. About twenty million collectively of those costs is just an inflation between now and twenty twenty-six, right? So, um, the, the schools are needed right now. I don't think anybody would argue with that. Um, we've got trailers, um, at eight or nine sites. We've got another six or seven that we're looking at this year. Um, we've, we've got, um, at least an elementary school worth of trailers out there right now and more to come. And then, um, you know, and those trailers do cost money, right? So, um, I, I think that my concern, if we were to continue to delay this, is that we're just going to continue to see those costs, um, come down the road at us in terms of trailers and other inflationary costs. Let's talk about the space for a minute because this is really the driving factor. This and inflation are the two driving things that have changed between last year's, um, CIP number and this year. To the discussion that was just occurring, um, this school right now is, we are about twenty to twenty-five percent larger in terms of total gross square footage, uh, than what we were at this time, let's say, a year ago. Um, and that is due to a couple of different things. One, we've designed, we're, we've, we've heard what everybody said about making sure that this school can actually take the students that we're saying it should take, right? Everybody talks about design capacity and program capacity, and what, what's the difference between the two? A good example right now, if you were to take Conway Elementary School right now and put it into the new prototype, and we looked at this, you would fill every single classroom, all the resource rooms, and you'd take one of the resource rooms still and use it as a classroom, and you'd have about, I think it was about four half resource rooms left. So Conway Elementary School right now, the program at Conway Elementary School fits into our prototype almost hand in glove with just a little bit of space to spare, right? So, um, we've, and when you look at the numbers at Conway Elementary School, I think we're nine hundred and fifty students right now at Conway. Does that sound about right, Lionel? Give or take?
Having trailers.
Um, and four trailers, yes. And we're getting two more this year, right? So, so.
Yeah, but let's remember, if I could just interrupt you for a minute, when you guys did redistricting of all the elementary school students, there was a decision made by the board not to relocate students at Conway that could have been rezoned or redistricted over to Grafton Village and Ferry Farm, because if you look at their numbers on the sheet, they're all green. So a decision was made by the board to do that, so you can't say that those trailers are there.
Well.
So I'm, I'm just saying that was a, an educated vote of your board, and, and kids were not moved out of Conway and probably should have been.
We did move them out.
No, there were a lot of kids that were not moved.
And the big move, we didn't, maybe not, but just two years ago, we did move the kids out of Conway into Grafton.
And to the point, you can, you can make, you can make the exact same comparison.
We did do that after.
Park Ridge and Stafford Elementary as well. So those are all schools that are experiencing trailers. And what we're saying, the program capacity, the number of kids, um, going to that school and the space that they should have, right? They fit exactly into the school that we're proposing to construct. But that requires more classrooms, right? So, um, this is an actual picture of Hartwood, right? This is actual picture taken just a few weeks ago. That is a chalkboard in the hallway at Hartwood Elementary School. That's what's happening right now in, in some of our schools. And if you go back just one slide, this is the pullout space right now at Rocky Run Elementary School. That's a storage closet. This is one of our hallway classrooms over at Rocky Run. So we see this all over the place. So we can't really build yesterday's prototype, the old Stafford prototype, with today's program. It just, it doesn't work, right? So we also compared ourselves to McNair Upper Elementary, which is one of the schools that a couple of our school board members, we toured. And we compared ourselves also with Prince William.
Where's McNair?
It's in, it's in Fairfax. And it's a very efficient, effective design. Everybody hears Fairfax and thinks lots of bells and whistles. That was a very effectively, efficiently designed school. We have the same architect working on ours.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred per square foot.
And Prince William as well, as you can see.
Is that one that, I'm sorry, is that one that, to make sure that you're gonna reference?
Yes.
The one that, the new one that's gonna be the green school?
The green school.
Where it's like, zero or whatever.
Oh, then you're talking about the new prototype for Prince William.
It is the renovation of elementary schools.
Invasion, correct.
Oh, it hasn't been built yet?
It is open this year.
Okay, let's not get off topic here. Let's focus.
So in terms of total square foot per classroom, we're, um, we're at about two thousand. Square foot per student, a hundred and twenty-six versus a hundred and forty to a hundred and eighty. And actually Prince William is likely a little bit higher, but that's based on what they've advertised. Also, keep in mind, we have updated building code ADA standards. And, um, we did, of course, take into consideration recommendation for larger schools.
Hey, Mr. Towery, can you go back really quick? I just wanted to summarize very quickly to, to draw the board's attention to a couple of things that you all have brought to our attention as a major concern. The first thing that you brought to our contention, to our attention as a major concern is the difference between design capacity and program capacity. You have asked us to bring forward a design that more aligns program capacity and design capacity. We have done that. You have asked us to build a school that is not the Taj Mahal. We have done that. You have asked us to build a school that is bigger, that can accommodate more kids. We've done that. So, we feel like we are delivering on the expectations that the supervisors have laid out for us. And we've done it in a manner that is more cost-effective than Fairfax, a better utilization than Fairfax and Prince William, more cost-effective than Prince William, and will actually accommodate our students and delay the need for you to build more schools on a longer timeline. So, we, we get that it's a bigger school and the more square footage costs more and the inflationary factors is real and it stinks and we've all been paying for it. And the reality is, is I think that every single person in this room, if we could go back in a time machine, seven years and build schools on the, on that dollar figure and not on this dollar figure, we'd all agree to it, knowing where we know today, but we can't. So, where we are today, we agree with you that this is the better course of action moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and thank you, Mr. Towery. I do have a few questions. Supervisor Gary.
Yes, thank you. So I do, I don't know how we're gonna hit six thirty.
Well, apparently we don't have a six thirty. Supervisor Allen may have to leave at six forty, but if the boards would like to continue, we could continue.
Thank you for that flexibility. So I hope people can stay. I just had a quick question about this, and I wanna make a statement and just be very clear about this. I don't always trust you all. I don't always agree with you all, and it's not my job to. I didn't elect any but one of you. So, um, it's, it's your job to answer to your constituents. I do appreciate Dr. Chase's candor about bundling and potential savings, because that's a big issue I'm having right now with what happened with eighteen and nineteen. And I, there's no real need to rehash any of that, but I'm not happy with it. And you know, I personally put my neck on the line in fighting for as much resources as possible to fund what you all need to do, that I believe are needs, not a wish list. I don't think this is a wish list. I think you've cut and cut and cut the fat as much as you can. And if we're honest, if it were our own homes, as, as mentioned earlier, if we outgrew our home, we wouldn't stick one of our family members in a trailer in the backyard. We would make some upgrades to our homes or we would purchase a new home, because that's what you do, because you're taking care of people, and that's what you all are doing, so thank you for that. My question on the nineteen, nineteen is the one that would be going on the athletic fields, correct, that has been decided. Is there a traffic study regarding that project? Okay, can I, can you tell me about that real quick?
Yeah, and Supervisor Gary, while Mr. Towery's walking up, I had a funny look from a few school, Board of Supervisors. This is relating to the vote that the school board had to build the elementary school nineteen next to Brookpoint High School.
On the athletic fields, because there was a decision to not do it in Embry Mill, which, you know, your own internal issues led to, now we're here and this is where we are.
But there are some questions about that. But anyway, go ahead, Mr. Towery.
Sure. So we actually just got the draft of the traffic study back a week or two ago. It shows no impacts. So essentially what, other than we need to do a little bit of restriping along Black Hawk Drive, because essentially what's happening is because the schools are staggered hours, the, the intersections and roadways there are currently accommodating a high school population, which is over two thousand students, right? And so we're about half of that size coming in and out of the adjacent facility, right? But you have off-peak times, so.
So just different times of day.
Correct. And we are also, as part of it, we're proposing to make a better connection, if you will, around the, the back of Brookpoint High School to allow traffic, car riders and/or buses to be able to also utilize the Stafford Middle School entrance off of Spartan Drive.
Are you all gonna do any community meetings there? So when those people find out that all this traffic's gonna come through those roads that were previously not connected, that would be very helpful. If you could do that.
It's not, there's no homeowners that are affected. It's just like on the backside, I don't know if you're, well, you are.
On the, on the middle school there is, that would be the road connecting through. Is that correct? Or you're just connecting the school properties? But there's houses there still.
Oh, on Spartan Drive.
Along Spartan Drive, yeah. Yeah, so you, you could see additional elementary traffic essentially using, or, or high school traffic essentially accessing from time, time along Spartan Drive, depending how they ultimately decide to operate the car rider lines versus buses. But the, the, one of the things we've really tried to do here, understanding that we're, we're putting another school into the same amount of space, right, is provide flexibility. And this is one of the things, Ms. Bomke, that we, and Dr. Chase, that we talked about onsite a couple of weeks ago. We're trying to make the site as adaptable as possible, moving, moving forward, so that not only will it work for the high school and elementary students, but also actually maybe even provide a little bit of benefit for the middle school as well next door. We've provided a few different options for our board to consider that would be additional funds, right? But some things that we could look to do that might actually provide a little bit of campus-wide benefit.
Okay, thank you for that. And I just, on, on that also, I wanna just thank the staff for the schools, that, all the work that you've done to figure this out. I know this has been a, a difficult task, so thank you.
And thank you for that suggestion. We are gonna go with that planned meeting. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that question that I hear?
Yes.
You did a transportation study?
Dr. Young.
Yes.
You said you did a transportation study?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Can you present that in the next time at our public meeting? So that the, the constituents.
Sure. Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, we can probably make it available online too, just post it up. And, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Timmons Group.
Who did the study?
Timmons Group.
Okay, Supervisor Allen?
No.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So in addition to the request, I asked about the, what would it cost to build Drew in one elementary? My only gripe about, okay, so having seen this and, and hearing what you guys are saying, my only gripe was, and it kinda speaks a little bit to the mistrust piece that we may get. And I'm not saying that we necessarily are mistrusting, but you can understand why. If you got, in my opinion, if you guys were thinking about which prototype model to follow and to align with, then when you come to us and say, you know, we wanna build X and Y school at this amount of money, but then come back a year later and say, oh, no, we changed our minds, we listened to what you said, and then we're at this, that should have been communicated to us, because when we're making decisions in the budget process and we're making CIP decisions and we're making how to pay basically our, our credit card bills, I go based on what you showed me. So when I'm making further decisions about our own CIP needs that are not yours, I'm thinking in the back of my head, oh, the school said fifty-four million dollars. So if you know that you don't have a definitive prototype or modeling that you wanna use for future reference, then for my sake, I would prefer not to see definitive hard numbers, to say, oh, this is what we're going after, this is what we can say. Because then, a year later, then that, that's not true, because during the process of figuring out what works best for our county, you realize that was never the model that worked best for us to begin with. So for future reference, I, I would recommend that until you definitely know what you wanna do, try not to stick to a, a price model, because then that impacts us as we're making our decisions with our tax rate. And then that also creates confusion, because I know I had confusion, like, and I told Mr. Foxburg, I'm like, where the heck did these numbers come from? Like, and I don't wanna be told so late in the process, because I need to be able to answer to those questions, because during, during the last budget season, I literally put out a tax rate based on what the schools asked me to put out. And so if you want me to, you know, put, as Supervisor Gary said, put my neck on the line, which I don't care, because our kids deserve the best education possible, then I need to know that the information you're telling me is updated, on time, and accurate. That's all I'm asking. That's my part of the transparency piece, so that I'm not left confused and arguing with two hands behind my back. And then someone else is like, no, that's not true.
So I guess on that, in that vein, you know, I think what the board, you know, a lot of our, my colleagues were very frustrated because of what has transpired. And, you know, we're all accountable to the taxpayers. I guess for me, and I can't speak for anybody else, but I still, I, if I was standing in a room, and this is always my lens since I've been an elected official since two thousand and ten, if I'm standing in a cafeteria in Falmouth Elementary and I have a hundred and fifty constituents there, I've got to explain to them why we are building an elementary school next to Brookpoint High School, where we are tearing up assets that the county already owns, tennis courts that we've already built twice, turf, or, um, practice fields, when we have a site over at Embry Mill that is already ready to go, I cannot hit the I believe button on why the school board made that decision. And I could not personally stand up in front of all these people and tell them how that site is justified. I don't have an answer. It doesn't make sense to me. I've never seen anybody, a, a division, tear up assets that we already own when we have a site in a specific location and build something where the growth is in the Embry Mill area. So I need somebody in this room to explain this to me and why that vote was taken the way that it was.
I can only speak for myself. For me, it was when I looked at the longest bus routes in the county, they all crossed ninety-five, all of them. And they're over an hour, and they're elementary school students. And when you put an elementary school in Embry Mill, that will force longer bus routes. Because right now, Anthony Burns is ninety percent filled with children that are busing from the Acquahia District. Hampton Oaks is over fifty percent full of children coming from the Acquahia District. Ha, Winding Creek is less than half, but has a significant number of children that are being bused from the Falmouth District and from the Acquahia District. If you put another elementary school in the Garrisonville District, we are going to have to fill it. Where do those children come from? We're gonna have to continue to bus them further. Otherwise, if we put the school there, we pull kids back, we pull kids back, we fill from the outside in. Since we are able to build two schools at once, we essentially dump all the crayons out of the box. We put them back in, um, in a manner that makes sense. Obviously, for schools like Rock Hill, Ferry Farm, Wide Water, you're not gonna see as much of a shift in population, because the children in the, at the furthest out ends of the county are going to have, you know, busing to the ones that are closest to them. But essentially, what you would be doing, if we put the school in Embry Mill, we would have, we have our kids in Embry Mill and Garrisonville. Are we pulling them back? Then who goes to Garrisonville Elementary? If we pull two hundred and fifty kids out of Garrisonville Elementary, where do those kids, who goes to Garrisonville? We pull the kids to Margaret Brent, then where are the kids from Margaret Brent gonna go? We're gonna pull them up from Hartwood? So we're just shifting kids around and.
So I appreciate what you're saying, but you just made a statement, you said, that makes sense. So if it all made sense, then why was it a unanimous, why was it not a unanimous vote by your board? That doesn't make sense to me. And I need somebody to, to convince our board why that decision was made. Cause I don't understand why we're tearing up assets that the county already owns. Supervisor.
With all due respect, the county owns both properties, so we would be tearing up property regardless.
So just to tie into what Supervisor Bomke says, I, I'm, in, in full transparency, there is, I, I don't think there's unanimous support yet for nineteen being where it is.
But they just submitted the plans.
I know, but we have to figure that out amongst ourselves, because we do have reservations about that. I, I specifically have reservations about Brookpoint, as Supervisor Bomke, like, I, I don't understand why an elementary school needs to be at Brookpoint. Giving, even given that information, if you're saying that the busing schedule and the bus routes are affected, then I'd like to see data about what a realignment would, would look like, the bus times and the potential gas costs. Because then I'm gonna compare that to the cost savings of what building at Embry Mill will cost us. Like, I need to see the math. The math needs to math for me to be able to support nineteen at Brookpoint. I can't just say, as she said, we're tearing up, you know, assets that we built and then we're gonna have to rebuild them. And then in the meantime, you know, kids are gonna be going to Brookpoint that may not have those services. They, they'll be impacted to some extent when they didn't need to be. And, and I need to understand why that, that decision is being made. And then the, the last question I'll have, you know, before it's my time to leave is, I don't know if Andrea and, and Chris maybe ought to do this on the school board's behalf, if, if you would allow it, but I'd like to see a five to ten-year plan for our tax purposes of where we need to be on our tax rate to allow for our three R in construction. Because obviously, a lot of this is massive amount of money that we can't do in a vacuum. But if, in a ten-year span, five to ten-year span, what it would look like, so that we can figure out how to get there and get the schools built and get our repairs maintained at an adequate level besides the underfunding that's been happening.
Okay, um, any other statements?
Yes, actually, I wanted to follow up on something you said.
Sure.
One of the other corrections or concerns for me is with the loss of the second property proffered in the Garrisonville District. I still do have to have land reserved for a future elementary, I'm sorry, a future middle school. HH Pool's the largest, is the most crowded middle school we have. I know that we do have Middle School Nine a little bit further down the CIP, but land is at a premium in my area. The Garrisonville District does not have a lot of vacant space. And growth is not slowing, so we need to be smart about where these schools go. We lost our middle school property, and that is of greater need. We can't build a middle school, an additional middle school in the north if we don't have the land for it.
So I was, I was asked to speak to the, the property in Embry Mill. There are two sites. One is less conducive at this time. There would have to be some modifications. We're working with the developer to, to work on those modifications. So far, it's, it's been a, it's been a good process with the developer, so we may end up getting two sites. We don't know what the, the one kind of in the curve, what that'll look like and how much of that'll be free and clear. We do have the other site, which is conducive to either an elementary school most likely on that site. But we have two pieces. We're working with the developer to try and clear up the one site before we receive it.
Okay, do we have any other questions from Board of Supervisors? Okay. Do we have any other questions from Board of Supervisors? Dr. Young? Oh, could you turn your mic on, please, Dr. Young?
North Stafford is nineteen eighty.
Brookpoint was ninety-one.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Brookpoint was in ninety-three.
In ninety-three. So just remember that when you decide to put this elementary school there, if you have to rebuild Brookpoint, you're not going to be able to do it because you will have to tear up that whole site. So that's one of the issues that you have to reconsider if that's the plan.
Okay. Anybody else on this side?
I guess I had another, I guess...
Sure, Supervisor English.
On a side note, nobody's talked about the bus garage, where are we going with the bus garage?
Your backyard.
Yeah, my backyard, I'll take it. But is it, is it, have y'all thought about, have y'all thought about, and I don't know, has the county taken that bus garage over and letting the county run it instead of you guys? If that's been discussed, if not, you don't have to discuss it tonight, but maybe something to throw on the table. It might be something to look at, maybe it takes something off your play a little bit. But I think if you could turn it over to us, maybe we could do it.
And I would also, you know, one of the things that when we came here this evening, we wanted to talk about our prior, top priorities. Last year, we were just, we have our full CIP and you have it. And we talked about our top priorities being eighteen and nineteen last year. And our top priorities are more about realigning the opening dates for Rising Star, Hartwood, and Drew. But I also would like to call attention, as we've talked about, Embry Mill, is that we do, as a board, current, and it changes every year, I understand, but our board does have ES twenty going in Embry Mill. So that's on, that's on this current CIP as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, Dr. Chase.
So I did want to say, as somebody who voted to use the Embry Mill site, that I did talk to staff about bus routes because I was also concerned about that. And what staff said to me was that the bus routes would be the same length, that it was simply a case of them coming down Route One, stopping at that light, and either having to go to the right or to the left. So it was not my understanding that that was a reason for not doing Embry Mill. Thank you.
Okay.
May I also say something too?
Sure.
So to echo Supervisor Gary's sort of candor in the issue, I don't think it's easy for us to trust either the decisions that are made when you ask us to look at something and speak on behalf of the schools. Clearly, you're right when you spoke earlier to say, this is our job, which is to butt heads and kind of get through the muck and mire and figure it out. But I hear a lot about the frustration with picking a site when the information was presented to us. You know, we are looking at untenable growth in housing in the next, you know, few years or whatever. So our job isn't necessary to look at our scope here. We are trying to look futuristically as to how these buildings, I mean, we can't keep redistricting kids every two years to accommodate a preferred site from one group of us to the other. We have to really look at, the Acquahia side is getting a whole bunch of housing, the Hartwood side is getting all this housing. It is an untenable situation for this school system to have to be funneled into what feels like picking a site that was preferred by someone else. And that's not to be mean to anybody else. It's just that when the information was presented to us as location basis and where we could go, and then looking strategically and thinking about how few redistricts we could possibly make or what could do. I mean, there is no right solution, and that's on both sides of our fence, because it's happening too fast. So you can be frustrated that we might not pick a location while we're frustrated that we can't stop the building. Does that make sense? It's really interesting that I feel the burden of what was left for me by past boards, right? And that's only because they were dealing with the information that they had in front of them at that time. So now, from a strategic standpoint, I'm trying to figure out, the picture's a little clearer, the fog is lifted a little bit more. We can see, we can't stop growth from nineteen eighty, we can't stop growth from nineteen fifty. I don't know why, but we can. I don't know why, I mean, I don't know if there's such a thing as a building moratorium, but until we can catch up, we are drowning. And every time we look, we're being given a cup of water from somebody else. So we have to really start looking strategically at how this happens in this county. It's not always going to be the right place that everybody wants it. But when the space was presented and we were looking at the totality of the building and what's coming and how this is going to happen, you'd be surprised the number of people that really like the idea of a campus situation. My kids are going to be on this same space. That's really inviting for some people. I'm going to elementary, to middle, to high school. That's community, that's family, that's, I mean, everybody knows everybody in all the schools. Right now, you could throw a rock and not hit an elementary school family that knows a high school family that knows a middle school family. So there's no perspective of what my kid is walking into. That's different when you have a campus like that.
Sure.
So there are other things other than, I think, land appropriation, particularly from my perspective, that went into the decision. And I think that we all have to be open to that, given the state of affairs that we have in Stafford County.
I appreciate that, Ms. Halsted. Okay, I'm going to go to Supervisor Vernut. She hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, thank you. I heard that. Just really quickly, mine is more on just a curious question. I saw Supervisor Gary had her binder open to the chicklet chart, which is the growth chart, which is all the red and the yellow, et cetera. My question is, does this show, this, because you guys have been good about showing us this chicklet chart, and I thank Mr. White because this is much more helpful, since he's been on board than prior years, when we couldn't really anticipate what that growth is. And you guys have done a great job working with our planning and zoning staff to see some of those impacts of residential developments that were approved twenty, thirty years ago, like Westlake, and what, where they're going to be and how that looks. So this is really helpful. But one of the things, like, as we've approved these new schools, that would be really helpful for us to see is what it looks like, unless it's already on here and I just didn't see that footnote, what, like, so if you're getting elementary school eighteen and nineteen and high school number six, what does the chicklet chart transition to and at what period of time? Because I think that is a, we look at this and we're like, but we already approved those schools. And then it's easy for us to dismiss the red chicklets. If you really want to be transparent, it's okay to show us, hey, it's good for three or four years, we're in the green, we're in the yellow. I think that we understand the situation enough and that we're trying to work with you enough, that we're not going to be like, oh, it's in the green, we don't want to, we don't want to build a school. We want to have that so we can look back and say, oh, this is why we had to move that school up, or this is why we had to do this, because the chicklet chart was turning yellow to red, orange, or whatever. So that would just be my big request in the...
And part of that challenge for us lies in the fact that that would require a redistricting to have been done, and we haven't done. So we couldn't necessarily give really good information as to this school. We could get, I mean, Lionel's amazing, and he could make something show.
I think Lionel can do it.
Yes.
So to answer Supervisor Vernut's question, which is a good question, and we can do it at the thirty thousand-foot view level by level, so like, elementary, middle, high, but specific attendance zones, no. So until we have zoned that school...
Could you do it, like, if there was like an overlay where, like, you're like, hey, this is how many, because you have the projected charts on how many students there are, you know the subdivisions are getting added in, so you could do like a hypothetical...
Maybe yes and maybe no. And that's part of the issue, is without actually doing the redistricting, because that's how precise it is, is it is down to the planning unit.
And I get that part, because, totally, I mean, that's how it is when we redistrict for the election districts and stuff like that. So it's hard, I get that.
But it's good. You should give yourself a pat on the back, and you're absolutely right. So, for example, you know, we go from being over a hundred percent capacity to opening two schools in elementary school to being just under capacity. And we can provide that information to you so that you can help plan better. Now, of course, we all know this too, looking at the future and looking at this chart, just even looking at the numbers, you know, we're kind of right back at this in just a couple of years, almost at every level except for middle school. But you buy yourself a little bit more room, you know, you rebuild Drew a little bit bigger than it was originally conceived. Maybe you don't have to re, maybe you don't have to do Middle School Nine as soon as you have planned. You can kick that out a couple of years. So I think that's a great suggestion. We can absolutely furnish it at the high level, and we can take a look at doing it at those lower levels.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Taylor. I have Ms. Gary and then Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll be really quick. I just wanted a little more background on this, and Dr. Taylor, I'll want that from you in just a second. So I'll just talk slowly while you're walking around. My question was, we've been discussing the current decision on the location for nineteen and the Embry Mill site, but for a little more background, were there any other sites that your staff was looking at, and how many? I don't need the details of where they were, per se, but like, what did we really go through to get to this? What were the options in front of the school board? Because I didn't have that information.
So this is actually a model of county-school cooperation and collaboration, because we do have a joint land committee that does look at suitable sites. And we actually identified a dozen potential viable sites for consideration. Some, of course, were more viable than others. And there were a variety, both on the east side and west side of I-95, that, that's, both the county and school staff made recommendations to the school board for consideration.
Thank you. So when you say a dozen, do you mean like twelve or so? Are we, we're talking about that many that were passed up to get to the Brookpoint High School property?
Correct.
And passed up, because we are also considering cost of those properties, too?
I totally understand that. I'm just wondering what was the process to get to where we were. And my other question, and please just forgive me for this, because I'm just trying to understand the dynamics and how we got to where we are, and this definitely impacts my constituents a lot, and also my family. Like, it is a little personal. I try and separate them, but I'm human. You know, those fields are used by NJ ROTC. My daughter participates in that. The middle school's field hockey, many other sports. And I think children will be disadvantaged in some ways if we do this. I'm a little concerned about that. So having that knowledge of how the schools already function there, I wanted just some more background information. So as you went through those different potential sites, your board was divided through those? Or, okay, pretty consistently divided through those? Okay.
Wasn't that a four-three? Right?
I'm not sure we can respond to that. I mean, these are discussions that took place in closed session, and we respect the confidentiality of closed sessions. I think it's clear that, you know, there were other sites that were considered, but if you want to get down to specifics, I think that's something this board would have to make, you know, have to consider whether we want to release that.
I'll be calling individual school board members then to have a conversation with you, if you don't mind, because I would like to know how we got to where we are, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
But I guess I want to drill down a little bit more to what Supervisor Gary just asked, because when we rebuilt Stafford High School, I remember the tennis kids had to go down to UMW to play tennis because their courts were, you know, taken away for two years. So did you say exactly who's going to be misplaced, and how are they going to have access to those events during the construction of the elementary school there? What sports activities and what other activities? Because that's a big part of high school and middle school kids' lives.
Absolutely. And we've worked very closely with both the middle and high school teams over there to look into all those concerns. I wish I had a layout up here, could probably explain a little better. So there's really two areas primarily impacted. The, where the marching band field is, if you're familiar with the site, then when you come into Brookpoint, there's the junior parking lot on the left-hand side. And then just beyond that, there's the tennis courts and the, I know it as the marching band field, where the kids, I think, also do roxy there. So that is basically where the school will sit. So those, the tennis courts would be rebuilt further down in the back. So we would, the timing right now for that is that would be one of the first activities to occur so that tennis would not experience a disruption in their tennis season. The biggest disruption is the junior parking lot for, we're anticipating one, one school year where juniors would lose, we would lose most of that junior parking lots. There would be one school year where that parking would be heavily impacted. After that, the parking lot, the junior parking lot, where the seniors currently park, and actually, the bus loop, the horseshoe bus loop that's there, would all be rebuilt into one large parking lot. So that from a, you would just have one year of impact from a parking standpoint. In terms of the overall field usage, we've worked very closely with the team at Brookpoint and Stafford Middle on making sure that they're not impacted. They feel confident that the fields, as we're proposing to reconstruct, will be more than adequate for their activities out there that they currently have.
Thank you, Mr. Towery. Dr. Young, and then Mr. Diggs.
I just wanted to, thank you, I just wanted to ask the question, Ms. Towery, outside of, you know, showing me that, the traffic study. I know that I have asked about a prototype in the past, and I was told that the prototype could be used anywhere. And I noticed that on one of the slides, it says, you know, prototype eighteen and nineteen. Are eighteen and nineteen the same?
Yes.
Prototype? So that means that you could ship, move that prototype anywhere in the county, correct? Because that was what I was informed, within reason, right?
There's certain site parameters we have, but within reason.
So basically, you could do a lot of savings if you are to put three elementary schools at the same time. I mean, I'm not saying that Brook does, you know, have to negate Brook because that's what the decision was made. But why would Embry Mill be twenty, thirty-two? If Garrisonville is the largest district in Stafford County, houses, and tell me no anytime I'm making these comments, that I'm incorrect, because I really want to know. Garrisonville is the largest district, like, within, you know, constituents in Stafford County, largest number of students in Stafford County. In addition to the largest number of students, anybody said no so far? Okay. In addition to the largest number of students, we also taken, we also taking Augustine, we also taking, take in Amy Clay, and tell me no if I'm wrong. I don't know how many percentage, it may have changed, right? We also taken entire Acquahia Harbor, unless it's changed, because I remember when I was on the redistricting, that we took Acquahia, importantly enough, because the parents there said they wanted their students to stay together. And so I did hear Ms. Sigmund say that some of them were at Anthony Burns, and to me that...
No, she meant Acquahia District, not Acquahia Harbor.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. And so I just wanted to make sure that, in that case, why are we waiting, knowing that the percentage is going to even increase even more for next year for the need of Garrisonville and their students? Why are we going to wait, knowing that if we built there, I don't care where, Griffiths, Wide Water, you know, or Garrisonville, that it will, it will eliminate the need of putting more trailers, or, and it will decrease what it is that we're looking at the pressure, especially if staff told us that that's where it's going to be. And the increase, what is the percentage of the student increase for next year, for Garrisonville?
Garrisonville, I'm not sure. Overall, it's about one point nine percentage.
Percentage of stu...
Overall, school division.
Okay, so the increase of the number of students for next year, what percentage is Garrisonville?
Would have looked it up, I can confirm.
Okay. And I think it's probably considerable, right?
I think Lionel's looking at numbers, actually.
What is the percentage of Garrisonville increases?
Percentage? Garrisonville is approximately eighteen percent of students in the county.
That is not, but in the, for the growth coming, what would that be?
Next year.
Oh, next year?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll have to get back to you. I'll have to get back.
Okay.
Okay, if we could have that information, that would be very helpful.
I think we should have it for all the different districts.
For every district. Okay, I believe Supervisor Diggs had a question.
Yes. So I hear the conversation taking place, and I want to make sure that I'm clear. Is the elementary school site at Brookpoint a done deal? Because I hear some on this side saying, we don't necessarily support it. We don't like that it's there, of that opinion as well. But is it, is it done? Is it, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So I have an eye...
I thought if we voted on it, that thought it was done, unless we bring it up for a vote. I wasn't aware that, or, like, we needed to have the approval after we've done the vote. But I'm new to this process, just like you are, even though this is my, you know, I've been on for two years. But we voted on it. That's where we decided to put the school, respecting y'all's opinion. I wasn't aware that that would change. I wasn't aware that that would change though.
So site selection for schools is something that the school board determines, but the board supervisors does have the power of the purse and you decide what monies are appropriated for school construction projects.
Okay.
So I would like to just, I want to throw an idea out here in light of all the discussion this evening. And I know that I for one want to also request from the school board, we had Ferry Farm that had massive renovations that have been done to it over, I don't know, has that project been finished?
Did you give out the answers to your question? You said that was a question.
Okay, and we have, so we have a response to that and an itemized list that's of all the expenditures and a total cost. Okay, thank you. For the benefit of Supervisor Diggs, I think that would be important for his community. So here's a thought. I'm very concerned in light of everything that I heard tonight about Drew Middle School. I have not been over there in a while. And if you're telling me that it's, may not last until 2028 when this rebuild will be, where the students would be walking into a new school, I believe that these two boards should come together and maybe flip Drew Middle School and Elementary School 19. Put 19 on hold. You decided not to bundle it to save the money and we moved Drew Middle School up and maybe Rising Star as well. But maybe we need to have another meeting because everything that I heard about Drew Middle and Rising Star, I will tell you, whether it's in my district or not, I have big concerns. And I have had numerous conversations, not recently with Dr. Chase, but over the years. And I had two of my three that went to that school. And it is a great school. But based on what I'm hearing, it is our responsibility to make sure that these students are in a safe environment. And I feel that in light of what I heard, I don't think that we could hit the I believe button on that. I'm also concerned about the mold. Have we done mold testing in that school recently? And if so, what are the results?
Yeah, there was, we had one section, one, this is not, just get over here. We had, we just found a spot in one of the storage closets in the gymnasium underneath a mat. And so, but yes, we regularly test mold, asbestos, all those things.
When you say regularly, Jason, is that annually, every six months, every three years? What's regularly to you?
On an as-needed and annual basis, depending on the different types of needs. So like asbestos, there's regular testing, you know, needed on a regular basis depending on the age of the facility. Mold and things of that nature typically come as we would get reports of something, right? So we would go in and we would take a closer look. So in this case, we found a place, we're in the middle of remediating it right now.
And you're in the process of remediating that right now?
Yes.
Okay. And how long will that take?
It's, I'd have to get back to you on that, but it shouldn't be more than a couple weeks.
Okay. And your board was aware of that?
Yeah.
Oh, some are saying yes, others are saying no.
Yes.
Yeah, there is mediation going on and it was a small container area in the gymnasium.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Last question.
All right, thank you. Mr. English?
Drew, Drew. Drew, Drew. Thing, again, I'm concerned because I didn't, I mean, I didn't know that, I mean, I knew it was bad, but I didn't realize it was that bad. Do you have a game plan if something happened, if something goes crazy tomorrow? Do you have a game plan where these kids are going to go? And I recommend that you do this mold study maybe every three months instead of every, wherever you decide. I think you should be on a schedule if that's the case, even if it's a small spot and asbestos. I think it needs to be done on a three-month basis if have to be. I'm really, really concerned again, and do you have a game plan if something goes crazy at Drew? Do we have a game plan where we're going to put these kids until we can get something done? You don't have to answer that tonight, but I'd like to know.
Madam Chair, can I also, one of the things that, you know, we talked about last year and you guys have definitely touched on it too, is growth. And so with growth being our biggest problem, losing ES-19 would be a huge problem because of the number of trailers that we have and will have to keep. And I can understand you're not hitting the I believe button on Brookpoint High School. But, you know, we have, you know, we need to be in the I believe too arena when a vote comes on your side to say yes to ES-18, yes to ES-19. And then we are going forward, we paid for the plans, we've already chose the site, they've done site work, there's money invested in that. To then pull that back and roll out something different means there's lost, you know, lost cost and just something to consider. I'm not saying that, you know, we don't have problems, you know, with, we definitely hear what you're saying on the ES-19 site, but that, you know, was our board decision and then we come to you today knowing those were secured projects, you know, feeling the accolades of that and then going forward with our next issue, which is deteriorating buildings. So we have the growth problem and we have aged facility problem. And we wanted growth handled and felt good about it last year and we were coming to you this year with aged facility.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Healy and then Ms. Vanuch.
I certainly think it's something to consider, speaking for myself. But the question I would raise to the board of supervisors, and this is to in effect defer 19 and go forward with Drew and Rising Star, looking at the estimated cost, it looks like it's about $84 million more to go forward with Drew and Rising Star than it would be to move forward with Elementary 19. And of course, this isn't an answer for today, but, you know, I would want some assurances that that funding would be available before we even started to look into it. Because that is a significant amount of money. And unfortunately, as we discussed, we don't have an option of doing Drew or Rising Star because of the locations we're talking about. So if that's something that you could perhaps get back to us on, it would, to me, it would be an important factor in, you know, in looking at this potential scenario.
Okay. Yes, Supervisor Vanuch and then Supervisor Diggs.
So just because I know we're approaching seven, I kind of wanted to make a little bit of comments on some of the solutions, right? So we talked a lot today about the problems and what we've done in the past, but I think I would like to just talk really quickly on some of the things that we have identified. We agree with you, we know we have problems and I think the community knows that we need new schools as well. We learned this year that proposing a 40% tax rate was not going to fly with the community and there was a lot of outrage over that. And so we have to figure out other solutions, right? Other alternative funding sources. We've been doing that on the economic development side. We do have our first data centers that have put plans in. I would like from, on our side, as we move through this process, to start projecting on the aggressive schedules that some of the data centers that have been approved are planning on, kind of where they would rack and stack on the CIP because that will help us really understand when those big revenues start coming in. And just so you guys are aware, I don't know if you tracked the data center agreement, but we went opposite of a lot of other localities and did front-loading. And so we're getting more money on the front end to address some of the school construction needs versus on the back end. So we'll be getting a lot more tax revenue on the front end than some of our other peer localities based on the way they structured the agreements. So that was something that we did discuss as a board in making sure that we are able to utilize some of that revenue to offset some of the school costs. So that's one thing. The second piece is that our board voted unanimously to accept legislation, and I think you guys already know this, as part of our legislative agenda package, but I know there's people listening to this meeting because it's live streamed and so I want them to know as well, in case they weren't watching all of our different meetings, that we adopted a unanimous legislative package agenda to put in legislation at the state level to allow us the authority to utilize a vote via referendum to increase the sales tax by anywhere from a half a percent all the way up to 1%. And all of that money goes to school construction and it would sunset after 25 years. And so if that passed the general assembly this year and was signed off by the governor, that would go, we could literally push that forward and get that on ballot immediately. And that's where we're going to need to be on the same page of what, what schools are we telling the voters are being rebuilt, built, et cetera, so that they are bought in on that sales tax because that's one of the only other avenues of revenue that we have as a local locality to be able to build schools outside of real estate and personal property taxes. And I think we're going to be really hard pressed to raise taxes on that end, but the sales tax is a little bit different and we're going to need your support to share with the community what that looks like and the benefits of that on the school end. And we are going to have to be in lockstep on it because if there's any dissension and there's arguments over what schools are going where and which ones we're doing, it needs to be a 14 to 0 vote in my opinion because we're all going to have to advocate for that because if there is a weak link in that chain, then that referendum's not going to pass because we're basically asking voters to pay more in sales tax and that's never a popular thing to do. But it will be our local authority to be able to do it. And I, and so I say that and I just want to really quickly say that that means that we also have to track other things that are going on in the general assembly, like regional transportation authorities that may also increase the sales tax because all of that is going to directly impact voters saying, wait a minute, they just raised my sales tax to, for transportation by 1%. I'm not going to vote again to raise another 1% on school construction. So those are all things that we're tracking. We're on the same page as you, but I didn't want to leave this meeting without bringing that up because I don't think the community is quite aware that, and I think Andrea's here somewhere, wasn't it like $36 million a year is what we would get from that 1%?
25.
25, okay. Maybe it'll be 36 million by then. But 25 million a year, that's a significant amount of money. That, I mean, that could build two elementary schoo-, yeah, you know what I mean? But that, that's a significant amount of money to add to a budget.
And in addition to that, we're fighting for the COCA. And if you want my opinion, I think every single one of us should find a day and all of us go to Richmond. At the same time, we could take a school bus or a van. And we need to go down there and we need to march and fight for COCA. The governor.
So then the governor comes in, then you do.
Okay. Also, Deonte, you had an additional question?
Yeah, just a statement.
Sure.
You know, I'm sitting here and I'm listening and we're talking about the building of 18 and 19 and then we're talking about the issues with Rising Star as well as Drew. And most mornings I'm at Rising Star. And so when we talk about pumping the lines out for the lead and those types of things, 2028 is just not acceptable. Kids with rats and roaches and things of that nature. Falling out from the ceiling in a county like Stafford, that is unacceptable to me. And, you know, I sat here in the beginning and I was getting so mad, I just had to sit here in silence. But I'm sitting in a comfortable environment. I cannot imagine the kids that have to go to school like that every day and then we expect them to learn. So I'm glad that Supervisor Vanuch kind of rounded it out there, but I think it needs to put a fire under all of us in this room because we're the leaders for this community and 2028 is just not acceptable.
Madam Chair. I just have, I just have a quick comment.
Dr. Warner?
I have one. Which is?
I just want to say that we have a number of problems. And Rising Star is, I will just tell you, early childhood education is something I'm very passionate about. So I spend a lot of time at Rising Star. I do not like seeing our youngest learners, our most vulnerable students there in that facility. But we can't address moving students if we have overcrowded schools. So even trying to find emergency location for our middle school students or elementary school students or Rising Star students is impossible when our schools are already filled to capacity. So that's why the board did make a decision to focus on capacity first and then focus on the other needs. And it's like the house is on fire and the, you know, and part of it's collapsing, you have to address both things. But we recognize that the county just doesn't have the funds to just, you know, build six schools. But we need six schools. So that's where the problem lies. And we are trying to make the best decision we can to, so that we can both meet the needs of our growth and have resources that we can need in an emergency.
All right, Mrs. Guy.
I do thank you guys for thinking outside the box or presenting us with solutions and I'm amenable to whatever the board, my board decides because I try to be easy breezy. But I will say that we have to have more capacity in our schools. Rising Star is in a horrible state, so is Drew, but you go into the elementary schools and kids are tripping over their backpacks and hitting their heads on the desk. That is an everyday thing, not the hitting the head on the desk, but like, you know, just trying to maneuver, that's a safety issue as well. And if we were to talk about all the little fires that we're putting out and talk about them publicly, then you'd be like, well, now we need to do this. Well, no, no, this is, everything ain't awesome. Any, like, it's, there's always something and I think each person has a different trigger as to like, oh my gosh, we have to fix this. But we've looked at that, all the triggers. We know all the triggers and we need capacity. When students are sitting in the hallway to learn, I mean, it's uncomfortable just sitting on that hard surface floor. After five or 10 minutes, your bum starts to fall asleep and then they're doing this and they're doing that, but they can't learn multiplication that way. We need capacity.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, so thank you Supervisor Vanuch for the sales tax, like, information again, because I think we forget that there are, there is that other avenue. It would be helpful for me, you know, as a citizen, I'd probably be the one on the other side being like, sales tax increase in my head, my, you know. So if there's, if there's a study that can be done to show what, like, what that sales tax would impact, is it clothes? Is it paper products? Is it everything? Is it across the board? So if we can get that information to help understand and educate, maybe not them, but me, that would go a very long way because I'm not 100% certain how that works when you talk about sales tax increase. You know, you've got like different states that have different models, Jersey doesn't tax clothes, but they have extra paper product stuff. So it would be helpful just to understand that moving forward to be on the same page.
Yeah, and just so you know, the governor did also put in his budget a 0.9%, was it 0.6 or 0.9?
0.9.
0.9, yeah, I thought it was. Okay. Thank you. All of a sudden, I'm like, wait. In his budget to increase the state sales tax. So, you know, we have a lot of competing interests. But with that, Supervisor Gary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received a message from Supervisor Allen. She said, can you please let everyone know for the record, I'm in favor of building 19 with 18 but not at Brook? So I just wanted to share that information, she asked me, for me to share that on her behalf. I also wanted to reiterate, as was brought up from the advertised rate last year, and I did run a survey on that. And most people, around 60% of people, were in favor of the rate going significantly higher than it did, particularly because it was for education. So I think when we talk about this 1%, people are going to be generally supportive. I don't think we're going to have too much of an issue, but I do appreciate what Supervisor Vanuch said in saying that we all do need to be united on this. It's really important and we obviously need access to that funding. And really to just close on this, I would encourage all of us, and I'll continue to do what I can with my counterpart, to invest in these individual relationships as well, get on the phone with each other. I talk often not only to Ms. Guy, but others of you, and it's been very beneficial for me to understand outside of these formal meetings, to just have those conversations, that relationship and to be able to ask questions. So I would just encourage everyone to continue to do that or do it if you haven't been. Thank you.
And I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I wanted to see if Randy, Susan, or Dr. Taylor had any final comments or your staff.
I just want to say thank you for hosting us this evening. I do find these dialogues interesting because we, I watch meetings and I hear some of the comments and I'm like, oh, shoot, they don't understand this. But then you all say something and I'm like, what? And so it's helpful, like I said, to have these. And it is my wish that when we start, when we have these really awesome programs happening in our schools and we have opportunities to share and show the work that you all have done to work with us, we would like for you all to come with us and be able to stand next to us. Yes. Well, we didn't have a vote, so there was no invitation until the vote was done. But I think that if we could have an opportunity for us to be hosts to other organizations or opportunities, that we could invite you all to come and, you know, speak with us and for us, like you say, as partners.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to echo how appreciative and grateful we are for the opportunity to talk about these issues because they are pretty important. I want to just be sensitive to how close 2028 is. I, I want to just be sensitive to how close 2028 is and the timeline required to build a school. And it seems like that's very far away in today's conversation. But, but 2028 and fiscal twenty-eight is a today decision? And a, a, a this-year timeline for talking about things that we would want to do in, in, in that year. So we will, we have a lot of homework to do. We're, we're glad for the homework. Thank you for illuminating your thoughts on a lot of these issues. It's been really helpful, and we're just very grateful for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I'll just add to that, to thank everybody for their dialogue tonight. And in someone's infinite wisdom, this is how we are structured in Virginia. And the, the relationship by design, I think Supervisor Baumke pointed it out, it's, it's designed for this kind of discussion. There's going to be contention. And, and the way the, the taxation and how the whole process works. So I just thank everybody for being engaged and, and working through it. Also, thanks to Dr. Taylor and his staff. We've had several meetings at the staff level. So you guys can be proud of the efforts that are going on behind the scenes with the two staffs. We're working hand in hand.
I've heard amazing things about how you, both staffs are working together.
Yep, so there's, there's a lot of good going on with that.
Work on your part, I hear, too.
That's it, thank you.
The last person is Andrea Light over in the corner. Do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, all right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.